Hi. Good evening to those who have just tuned in, thank you. I'm coming to watch our meeting, our full council meeting on Wednesday the 25th of May 2024. My name is councillor Amory Nixie and I'm vice chair. Thank you. Welcome everybody else, good to see you all. Okay, so item number one is apologies.
We have apologies from councillor Young, personal matter. Councillor Wing, a personal matter. Councillor Albera, family commitment. And councillor Hudson, who's unwell.
Thank you. Apologies. Do we have any paper copies or is there none available on the agenda?
Sorry, there isn't stairs.
Don't worry. Sorry, look at councillor Austin's screen. Yeah. I will say what we're about to talk to. Okay, so item number two on the agenda, declarations of interest.
Yes, I do have an interest in the Ramsgate Skate Park item, please.
Thank you. I'm involved with the Ramsgate event.
Thank you. And three of the organisations that applied for funding.
Lovely, cheers, thank you for that. Okay with that? Yeah, okay, superb. Item number three, public participation, public request to speak. Do we have any?
None received, thank you.
Lovely. Item number three, two is report from the county councillors on matters directly related to Ramsgate.
I'll give you a quick report, another exciting. As you know, it's hard work to try to get anything done and succeed. In fact, I've been to the Sandwich Depot twice to see a certain individual by his name. It's been very helpful. That's because I think they're doing so much overtime and they don't get paid, so they're not there. But when I go up in there twice, they all go out and pretend to go and look for him. I've worked places, but he's not there. I won't hold against him. There were joint transport board meetings, which have been non-existent since October 22. Happened at the joint when KCC didn't turn up, TV didn't turn up. I've been at KCC all day and I go to my day, it doesn't happen. If I don't storm off, I say, well, if they're not there, it's not joint. So that's where we are at the moment. I've seen the cabinet member for highways in Maystone and he's promised he either come down there to see us or me or turn up at other parish councils. I'm still waiting.
Could I just go through that? And thank you for your time and trying to chase things up. Can I just go through what you said then? You started off, you said you went to sort of like the site, you know, the waste disposal. And you didn't say what for and you haven't said why you're chasing up highways. What particular things are you chasing up at the moment?
Anything highways. Normally you'd come pick me up and we have a float around and we state the roads.
But when you went to the waste disposal site at the time, what was it in particular that you went there for?
Anything related to Ramsgate, things are not being done. Several crossings, white lining, lighting, picking pot holes and making, and state the roads.
Right. So do you think it might be an idea if we looked at some targeted, specific things that need doing that we can actually action or we actually know that that thing is underway? That's the thing we're chasing. Then we can support you, if Ramsgate Town Council, we can support you in your KCC role. Say it's this particular item that we are looking at as opposed to just general. Because we can just be vague and then you're going for meetings, as you say, and not getting anywhere. So rather than not getting anywhere, let's be specific and target and therefore we can really sort of like hone in on stuff.
Well, I'll ask them to come along, be one or two in place and explain themselves. Because it shouldn't always fall on my shoulders, they're the officers.
Right, but I agree with you and they can come along, yes councillor Bruno, we'll let you, sorry. But let's be specific. So the next time that we talk about something, let's actually have it's this road, it's this pot hole, it's this reason, as opposed to just general stuff. Because I think because we're award councillors of different wards, it would be nice to see which particular area because then we can assist. We can't assist if we don't know where exactly it is you're looking for.
There's too many pot holes to mention. I'd ask for a complete survey of Ramsgate and Thannick roads. I've got to do no more than that, a complete survey. Either which ones you could look at everywhere, I mean, I've got cannonwork, I see it every day. They come along, we've got stones, they come along, put some time back on there, two weeks later, they're back again.
Right. But I'm going to say, so the next full council meeting we have in a month, let's try and action something before then that we can be specific about. Because otherwise we're just saying KCC and they're not doing anything.
No, 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 no. I mean, I went on the bus today, you cannot move around Ramsgate, you cannot move around Thannick. The buses are late, everybody's getting, we're talking about climate. We jump on their buses and they're.
But we're talking about what you as a KCC councillor have done since the last meeting and now, so what you've acted.
I've done as much as I possibly can.
We can talk about us.
I know, I've done as much as I possibly can. You can talk about it all night, I've done as much as I possibly can. Unless I go there and get a bloody truck out and do it myself.
That's fine, then what you're saying is nothing, that's fine.
No, I'm not going to say nothing.
Well, you are, you're saying that nothing's been.
I try to, I try to work with KCC, you know, these people I have to work with and that's obvious to it.
Fine, but what I'm saying is unfortunately, even though you've tried and I'm saying you haven't done anything, I'm saying nothing's been accomplished. So thank you for your efforts and then we will try and assist in future once we know it's specific. Thank you councillor Green.
Yeah, I've had a number of complaints about the works on New Haven Road. People saying that they're dangerous and they're carrying on for far too long. I think I've written to you about it.
Anyway.
What have you done?
What? I stood up in council and I spoke up for the people that actually elected me. Very problem you mentioned, the chaos at home, we can't move in and Ramsgate can't. So what did they do? They suspended me from the party for 21 days. That's how they, that's how they listen.
That's another. You tried to set the point councillor Shaw. Councillor Green is asking you a specific question.
What can I say? If I stand up in KCC to represent the people that voted for me and they suspend me, doesn't that tell you a lot of things?
Councillor Shaw.
Yeah, it does.
Councillor Green.
There's no good kick out, that's where it is. That's the biggest problem. We are controlled at KCC by cabinet members. I'm an ordinary person, doesn't matter whatever people you get elected from Ramsgate, you go there with your local knowledge and that's where you go. And that's the brick wall I'm hitting at the moment.
I think that answers your question councillor Green, doesn't it?
I was just thinking about the answer, councillor Shaw, you've got that list about the roads at the end of the city. Take that after that. Yeah, so that would be.
But it was for after councillor Shaw had finished his. So if anyone's got questions for councillor Shaw before me, I'll come in after.
Just to say, you've been asked for 20 mile an hour speed limits in the centre of Ramsgate before six. Well, since I came back into the council in 2019, so what's happening, Margate got 20 mph limits we haven't.
We can sit here all night and talk about highways unless I'm going to enforce it. Five mile, 15 mile an hour, 20 mile an hour, 30 mile. I mean, the other day, when I saw you Sunday, those motorbikes racing up there, 20 motorbikes when I saw you on Sunday and they were doing 60 mile an hour up the harbour.
I think we're talking about how to enforce it though.
How can we put the 30 mile an hour distance on the road as in the.
There's a cost, there'd be a cost. KCC, a broke, there was a cost.
They've had them in Margate for three, four years now.
That's Margate, I'm interested in Ramsgate, I mean, there is a cost. Find out the cost, ask KCC what they're going to do about it.
Well, I mean, that's up to you, isn't it?
I can only keep asking.
Well, if you would.
I don't mind asking KCC.
If councillor Shaw.
Give me a list of what you're complaining about and I'll just say.
Is for that particular thing and report back to us at the next council, that would be great. Excellent, thank you councillor Austin.
We have a meeting organised, a Zoom meeting organised on the 6th of June, I think it's later on the agenda. There's Sam Caesar, who is the east person for highways specifically as a result of us pursuing the 20 mile an hour matter through the climate angle. So I think the town clerk has sent them a link round to that meeting. And we've asked about the 21 hour and about the pedestrianisation, pedestrian centres and things that we agreed would be the priorities for this council.
Thank you.
I don't know whether we'll get anywhere with that, but she offered them a meeting, so obviously we jumped at her.
So for that, did you want to talk with my councillor?
After everything to last, I'll tell you that's a bit like yesterday.
Um, KCC are quite well aware of what we want in Duxford Park Drive. A petition was presented to them by Karen Constantine, our KCC rep, last week, I think the 23rd, with 2,000 signatures from Kena Raymond, who's the mother of the young lad that was killed. She was actually on TV last night on the BBC South East. So KCC are quite aware of what we want and what we need. And it's a pity, well, that we can't, that's not a good issue for us. But we'll carry on doing it as our T C council.
Can I just respond to that? I try to act on all this. Anybody that loses their life, there's two sides to every story. That road I travelled on for 70 years plus. If you travel that road at 20 and 30 mile an hour, you shouldn't have a problem. Someone hit that tree at 60 mile an hour plus, that is a problem. You have as many speed limits everywhere and I shouldn't say it and it's been told to me before. There's not enough people that died on that road to enforce these speed limits. It's an awful thing to say, but that's how it is.
I don't think you should be saying that it's due to speed.
Pardon?
I don't think you should be saying that. Well, but you think it's due to speed. There's no evidence of it.
What you see is what you get, I mean, that is what's been told because it is a concern. Any life lost on the roads of Thannick is a concern.
Yes, which is wonderful, thank you. Councillor Crittenden.
It's all right, the town clerk's just answered it, thank you. A stage for a request.
Oh, right, okay.
It's just something I wanted to check, but the town clerk's answered it.
Yeah, certainly, okay, I'll be right, thank you. That's the Kent County councillors' report done, okay? If you're all right with this. So, thank you councillor Shaw. Okay, so item number four, minutes of the council meeting held on the 1st of May 2024. We are going to approve it if we can. I have a proposal from councillor Heatherington, a second one from councillor Austin. All those in favour? Thank you, take it. Empty against, same, okay, super, right. And onto the really exciting stuff, finances, including grants, item number five. Number one, to receive a report of payments from the 1st to the 30th of April 2024. The councillors asked to note the payments and authorised town clerk and RFO the total of £11,002.95 and approved the payments above the threshold delegated to the town clerk and RFO, total of £108,732.24. What do you?
Thank you, Chair. Members have the list of payments in front of them. Please do let me know if you've got any questions about anything that I've already approved or is on the list of payments to be approved.
So, nothing more to say, are we?
I propose that we note the payments that you've already approved.
Brilliant, do we have a second? Oh, sorry, beg your pardon.
And approve the ones that would be announced to approve.
Thank you, sorry for interrupting. Second to councillor Austin, all those in favour? Thank you. Against and stains. Okay, that's the first bit done, thank you. So, 5.2, to consider a report from the deputy town clerk and F O and the recommendations of the grant scrutiny panel on the funding applications detailed below. And just before I read out the next bit, just to explain that, so we voted in a grant scrutiny panel to basically take the work out of looking at the grant applications before they came to council. So this is a council-approved group. We met the other day and it took two and a half hours, we didn't do this in lightning. We really deliberated an awful lot of stuff and we are presenting it to you today. So Ramsgate funding applications, shall I read it out or do you just want to? Yeah, go on, they're tired of me.
So the first group of applications is to come from the Ramsgate Fund. There's 17,000 remaining with an intention that 7,000 would be spent within this round, this quarter of the year. First of all, we have a request from the Ramsgate Society towards the Ramsgate Seafront Shelters. A grant of 1,400 has been requested and the grant scrutiny panel is recommending the full 1,400.
Are we voting on it each separately?
Yeah.
Yes?
Did I ask what it's to do?
The society renovated 14 seafront shelters in 2011 under the terms of a lease. The lease expired in May 2023, but the society has continued to maintain the shelters until a new arrangement is in place. The cost is for the purchase of paint necessary to repaint four large shelters situated along the Royal Esplanade.
Okay, okay. And suppose that we hang it from that?
Second to councillor Heatherington, all those in favour?
I'm not abstaining, just some of these meetings, I wasn't there.
Against.
Same, thank you, that's Carrie. Okay, maybe.
Next, there's a request from Ramsgate Skate Park Project.
No, because it's just a vote, you can listen to what we decided.
And for the War Recreational Ground Basketball Court refurbishment, £3,500 is requested. £1,400 is recommended by the grant scrutiny panel.
So as you go through this, you'll notice that not the whole amount has been granted to an awful lot of people. So obviously, the first thing I'd like to point out there, there was an awful lot of applications with a very small pot and we really tried to make sure people got something so that they were able to either match fund it or crowdfund on their own, that they could at least do the project. So this was a really difficult ask. Like I say, a two and a half hour meeting, it was just like, how are we going to get this money? So please understand that as you hear the amounts coming forward.
Who's going to use this basketball? Is it in association with life action?
Yes. Yes, it is. Any other comments before I go to, is anybody going to propose a yes? Yeah, councillor Heatherington, anybody seconding? Thank you councillor Ashley, all those in favour? Thank you, thank you.
The next application is from the sixth Ramsgate Royal Harbour Sea Scouts for Ice House Brickwork. £3,216 is requested, £1,000 is recommended by the panel.
Okay, again, this is an awful, basically, you know, asking to do the brickwork and the rest of it. So we cherry picked bits that we knew that we could accomplish with our money. So there's a lintel that they need to do and there was something else that we could do, we could pay for that. So it was like two specific things that we knew that they could do and then they could find the money from elsewhere. Any questions? No. For the Chair, I propose we accept it. Have a second, I'll leave councillor Austin if I may, all those in favour? Thank you.
Discovery Planet CIC for weekly social lounge happy Mondays. £3,500 requested and the panel recommends that council advises the applicant that there is no funding for people services, that KCC understands the importance of this service and recommends a contribution of £1,000 towards material and premises. That suggests that the applicant is proactive in promoting the service.
So again, the problem we have with that is basically paying for people, for staff of which we can't do. However, we could, I mean, it's a drop-in centre, it was very much needed, especially with the people that they support. So again, we looked through and thought, right, how can we support this? And we chose the bit where we could at least provide the team coffee and so on and so forth. Yes councillor Green.
Just to clarify, whether Ramsgate Fund is the right fund for this, wouldn't community feel better?
The problem with that is there's a very, very, very small potting community and there's already two up for this. And I can't remember if it was that one or the other one, they've taken two, haven't they, the particular organisation? And one of them was going to come to the community fund and I thought that might be later, but you're right.
So the balance of the community services fund is £1,122 remaining. And there's two grants that you're going to consider totaling £15,000.
Yeah. So that's why we basically looked to see what we could give them, that particular drop-in centre. Again, it's mental health and.
They're a great organisation.
Yeah.
More than happy to propose acceptance.
Oh, thank you, do we have a second, Chair? Thank you councillor Arora, all those in favour? Thank you.
Chair, may I ask a member, just take a very quick break to ask someone something? So the next item is, so moving over to the events fund, there's a budget of 41,000 remaining with 18,500 to be allocated in this quarter, but there's 10 applications with. Sorry, this one, sorry. DCDT?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
Thanet Community Development Trust, Ramsgate Trail Guidebook Printing. £3,372 requested, £500 recommended by the panel.
Any questions?
Is that? Is that the amount that we've got to spend, the seven that we said we've got to spend this round?
Yeah, we basically honed down to what we had this round and again, there were, I mean, when we went through them, we looked at match funding, we looked at how much they've had before and things like that and also who they covered and so on and so forth. This particular group hadn't put any other funding towards it, so we've put something in so that they could either match fund or they could, you know, community fundraise themselves that they'd had a start and it was basically.
It's very interesting.
Yes. Any comments? If not, I propose we accept. Second, councillor Heatherington, thank you, all those in favour? Thank you.
Right, so moving over to the events fund, there's 18,500 available and applications of nearly 41,000. So first of all, Ramsgate Festival of Sound, CIC.
I can't, because I'm on board, that's why. You can, yeah, you won't vote, just thank you.
Ramsgate Festival of Sounds and they've requested £9,000. The recommendation from the panel is to award 3,000.
Any comments? And I propose we accept. Second, councillor Crittenden, seconded, thank you councillor Crittenden, all those in favour? Thank you.
Kent Film Foundation for an event wildlife filming, there's no specific date. £4,000 requested and £500 recommended for transport and travel.
Again, it was something that was very difficult to break down to see what they wanted, but we realised it was quite a limited group, again, we're talking about coverage, where some things cover a lot of Ramsgate or lots of areas. This was a very specific group of people and so therefore it was deemed suitable, the amount that was given, that it could be specific, that they could at least start that off.
Is this for an event, a sound like a event?
It's part of the, it's part of the International Film Festival. Any other comments?
Yes, it says here that it's about to chop out of the venue with their filming equipment to specific wildlife areas level to us.
Yes.
It's a series of events maybe?
Yes, yes, the council's doing it quite right. Any comments, I'm going to propose to accept. Councillor, seconded, all those in favour?
How much was that for?
Ramsgate Bowling Club, event and open tournament from the 4th to the 11th of August. Grant requested £1,000 and the panel recommends £1,000.
Any comments?
I just don't. Yeah, that is actually a fairly small amount of the total project cost, so.
Yes, it was, yes. Yes, yes.
And it's something that we've supported for many years and it does bring quite a lot of people into.
Yes, but like you said, I mean, it was very interesting, again, the grant applications of like, you know, a lot of people are very good at looking elsewhere for monies and putting an awful lot of effort into it. And this was something that again does bring it. It was very easy to be able to turn around and say yes to the whole amount of, again, the amount of coverage it would get. So I propose that we accept that, seconded by councillor Green, all those in favour? Thank you.
EF8, Discovery Planet CIC, event, programme of learning opportunities for the whole community for six months. Grant requested £4,000. Recommendation from the panel, the council requests clarification on what the activities are. Is it for STEM education? Running costs cannot be funded from the events fund, so this application possibly sits in the community funding.
So this is a really difficult one because it wasn't an event where you looked at it and they do need money and what they are trying to do is very good. Yeah, they weren't specific enough in their information of what was going for. So we said, look, if you are specific, if you said it with STEM, which again is this, you know, girls into science and engineering and things like that, so it's a fantastic programme or something like that. If you can pinpoint on something, then that would be very worthwhile, but it is more of a community events, a community, whatever it is, fund.
A programme of learning opportunities.
What was the community fund called, I can't remember?
Discovery Planet.
No, no, don't worry. Sorry, other funds, it's a fund's name.
So the community fund.
The community fund, oh, but anyway.
You mean the one that's got no money?
Yeah, that one, yes. But there's, but we'll come on to that and you'll understand that this is actually going to come back to us again and you'll understand why in a second, but anyway, so we're just, we need to vote on it or do we need to?
Yes, I think resolve to defer it whilst we receive further information.
Okay, so I'm proposing that we get further information? Yes. Yeah councillor Heatherington, seconded, all those in favour? And we were very specific, saying we're not rejecting, we just need to know where this sits so that we can pay you.
Right. EF9, Ramsgate International Film Festival, CIC, for the Ramsgate International Film Festival in this year. Grant requested £5,000 and it's recommended a contribution of £2,000 to help with screening of events, provided these events are well promoted.
So again, it was, bear in mind that they've had someone in particular event, there's events with children. We realised that this is a festival that's building up and so it was a contribution to it, but we do want to specify that this is promoted as much as possible. Any comments, yes councillor Green?
Is this the one that we had problems with last year?
Problem being, I can't remember the.
The person who was actually asking for the money, is that the one?
I don't think so, because normally it's the same lady, isn't it?
Yes.
I don't think so, but I'm not sure what you mean.
Yes, I think this was. Yes, I think this was there was an application, I think it was between Kent Film Foundation.
And the film.
They were the premises owner then, there was somebody else who was delivering a project within that building.
Yes, yeah, sorry, Councilor Green, I remember that now. Any other comments? I propose to accept, seconded by Councilor Heatherington. All those in favour? Thank you. Abstain and against? Are you abstaining or against, sorry?
I'm abstaining.
Thank you.
EF10 Screaming Alley, CIC, event Show Must Go On, Queen themed show on bandstand at Ellington Park. £3,500 requested. And the recommendation is that the council offers the use of Bradford House to the value of £1,000. For two sessions to hold fundraising events. Funding to cover the cost of staff to open and close Bradford House, hall hire, et cetera. Bradford House event organiser will need to be consulted as to the hall's availability.
So basically what happened here, this is also part of the Ramsgate Festival of Sound. So obviously we've put some money towards the Ramsgate Festival of Sound, but I do realise that this is a group that are doing something in it. However, the event itself is quite of a watershed type, although it could be in Ellington Park a bit later. And they did say that they could crowdfund. And so we thought, bear in mind that we've got such a low budget, we would give them the opportunity to crowdfund using Bradford House, because they are actually based there at the moment. So if we gave them two sessions and used our £1,000 to support them in terms of our technicians, that's basically paying our staff to open up and close and things like that, according, obviously, with their line manager and the availability of the dates. It would, they'd probably be able to get more money than the £1,000 if they had that facility. So we were trying to.
Creative.
Yeah, with our, with our monies, if that makes sense. Yes.
I think that is creative, but Bradford House is going to close. Does it fit in?
It does fit in, yeah, it does fit in. Yes.
I just want to make a comment. I think this actually is a really good example of why we set up the new Grants Committee. Because coming up with a creative solution. And I appreciate the amount of work that you put into it, but we would never have come up with this in council.
In council.
And I just want to, you know, it's just praise for the new committee. And I think this is a really good example, a second really good example of coming up with something really creative.
Oh, thank you. Cheers, well, that's very good. Lovely to hear, very much. Right, so again, I can't vote on this, because I'm going to propose to be off of that, accept it, whatever we're doing with it. Do I have a second, Chair, Councilor Crittenden? Thank you. All those in favour? Thank you. Cheers.
EF11 Arts in Ramsgate, event Signage Workshop and Glow Up Project. Grant requested £9,000. Scrutiny Panel recommend that council does not award funding to this applicant on the grounds that it is not an event. It may sit within the Ramsgate Fund remit. Council to agree whether to transfer the application to that funding stream.
So, Councilor Ross.
Now, go ahead, go ahead.
No, 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 go on, go on.
I was going to say that I should probably declare an interest here, because Councilor Heatherington and I were in correspondence with us in Ramsgate about this. And they were talking about running workshops, so we said, go ahead with the Events Fund. It does appear from this that that hasn't come through in the way that we rather expected it might have.
Yes, it does. It was an excellent idea. I mean, it was one of those things that we spent a lot of time over. It was an excellent idea and you think, right, how can we assist this? But within that particular budget, it was a very difficult thing to do. So again, we've asked to go back to explain this, because if there's a way that we can do things in the future and they can assist in the future, if they're going to hold an event per se, then that was something that we could definitely look at, but at the moment, it wasn't able to get the money for that particular thing.
I feel uncomfortable having advised them to go for the Events Fund now, because we are meeting next week, so hopefully we can.
But, Councilor Ross, I think it's, I mean, I think it's really good of you that you, you know, you offered your help and, and what I want to say is like, this is us offering our help, because like you, we actually hope them to be able to produce something, do something for the community. And we're just assisting them through the way that they can do it, so it's just a.
Okay.
Perfect. It's definitely not a case of, right, I know you're not getting any money, it's a case of, right, well, we need to tweak this and we need to do something. I've got Councilor, and then Councilor Green.
I just wanted to ask a question, stroke, make a suggestion that, and I don't know if this is possible from a Grants Committee perspective, but if you do receive an application that clearly says Fund X and it should be under Fund Y, it's the only reason why you can't ship it over if it's under Fund Y. And you don't need to answer that now, but.
I can answer it, because, so for example, the one that I said earlier is going to come into the Community Fund, because we thought that's in the wrong place, we can move it over if council are in agreement of moving it over. And so, yes, we can, but obviously we bring that to council.
I was asking, do you need to bring it to council or could you, as the committee, just move it over if it's got the wrong name on the top?
And I. I think, I think we need to bring it to council. I think we need to make sure, I mean, it's as transparent as we can get to, isn't it, really?
It was just an idea that you might be able to make that choice yourself in the Grants Committee.
We would, like this, we would recommend, so we would say, right, we're going to bring it to council, because this is what we're recommending, because we're going to do. So, so yes, we'd be going through the same process we are now. Thank you.
May I say that when applicants initially contact the officers, that it's quite common that my colleagues will say this, this would fit under one or the other. And I think this is possibly one that's just been a bit, it's, it's, it's not, it's not quite, you know, a hundred percent sitting on one or the other, but already officers will, will steer from, from an early stage, try and get people in the, under the right pots.
I was just trying to think of something that might help, but.
Yeah, thank you.
That's all, you know, it was just an idea, but.
Thanks for, Councilor Crittenden, Councilor Green.
I'm not sure what they're planning to do. Is this one where offering them a venue would, would help? I don't know.
No, they have their own venues.
Yeah, Arts and Arts.
Yeah. Thank you. I'm going to propose that we accept the recommendation. Second, Chair, Councilor Ara, thank you. All those in favour? Thank you.
EF12 Ramsgate Town Carnival and Fair. The event Ramsgate Town Carnival at Fair 2024. £6,538 requested. And the Grant Scrutiny Panel recommend the council awards a contribution of £4,000.
It's three, £3,000.
Or it's four.
Four.
Is it?
Four. Let me just. That will be.
That's what Pegwell is, because it was going to be that. That was.
Looking right up.
I was saying.
Is this for the carnival culotte or for the event itself?
It's the event itself, I believe.
Event.
Now, in my recollection, I've got this down at £3,000. The reason being is because obviously money is tight and something the other, we were trying to give everybody as much as we can. But I remember we tried to, because we had it at £2,500, which we know is low, we put it up to £3,000. So if it is for, we just bear in mind that we might be taking £1,000 off our next quarter, because I'm, I was, it was one particular stuff in my mind. So I could be wrong, don't, it's not the first time, but that's what I remember, so just, just bear it in mind the next time we come to that. Anyway, shall we vote on, on £4,000 if that's what it says? Recommended by Councilor Ara, do I have a second, Chair, Councilor Heatherington? All those in favour? Abstain, against?
Applicant Cliffsend Parish Council for the event Huguen Viking Ship 75th Anniversary Celebration. Grant requested £500. Recommendation of the panel to award £500.
Well, again, we're very conscious of outside the town centre for people asking monies, because they rarely do. And we thought it might be a gesture to, again, encourage people to go over there, to have a look and to, to bring it on the map. So we thought it was a small ask and we allowed that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Also, the town. It's no precedent. I don't think we can do it.
Okay.
Sorry, but.
See, I live in Ramsgate, I pay into the parish tax.
Well, the parish of Cliffsend.
Yeah, don't get me wrong, but some.
Well, I'm happy, I'm happy for somebody to propose that we don't accept it, because, I mean, it was, it was one that we spoke about, we weren't entirely sure, because we do have Pegwell and Cliffsend RTC councillor.
Pegwell.
Pegwell.
It was in Ramsgate.
Well, in that case, because for something else that's coming up, then I would, then I would go against my own recommendation, make it suggest maybe we don't pay for it.
I was going to say, I just thought it was really nice that we were co-working with our immediate neighbour and this is, I mean, the, the Huguen ship is just a major thing for Ramsgate, even though it is over the boundaries, so I was quite happy to support it. But I do appreciate it's, pay taxes elsewhere, but it was a small amount for something that is, is actually quite important to local people and even those that live outside the Pegwell area and in the main part of Ramsgate, I was more than happy to support it, but.
Anybody want to say anything else? I mean, it's a tricky one, obviously. Go on.
Usually in the past, Chair, I don't know what Councilor Crittenden's saying, but usually if it's outside the boundaries of Ramsgate, we'd have supported. We've had applications from all states, as you say, there's one later on.
There was one later on that said outside the boundaries and we rejected it because of that, and I would feel like we're hypocritical if we accepted this one because of that, but only because of that, because actually it would be quite nice, as you've said, Councilor Crittenden, to make something like that often. But I bear, I do take on board that it's outside our boundaries and that's always been quite a firm part of our thoughts before then.
I think, I think there is a march or something, isn't there, from, from board stairs to Cliffsend? Now, if there's a cost associated with that, where it comes through Ramsgate, we could perhaps stretch a point.
Okay, well, the other thing is, we could offer them on loan some equipment instead of the money, so for example, their safety equipment comes to £350, all their PA system that they need is £400, so if we lent them something of those and, and offered that instead.
Yep.
That might be.
Good idea, yes.
So we offer the PA equipment? Or whichever one they would prefer, if they can have one, whichever one that they choose that they might not be able to get necessarily? Okay, with that, so I suppose that we, we ask them, would they like to borrow one of those particular elements of equipment in, in our assistance and wish them, and wish them all the best and we support it wholeheartedly? Do I have a second, Chair? Thank you, Councilor Heatherington, all those in favour? Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, that's £500 packed towards the, isn't it?
Ramsgate Arts Festival Limited, event for Ramsgate Day 2024. £4,475 requested. And the panel recommends that council awards a contribution of £1,000 towards the workshops and activities for young people, buskers and musicians. RTC technicians' time should be paid from the funding and not as an extra. Staff are subject to availability and line management approval.
Okay, so I know this is controversial and I know Councilor Ara was in the room and everything. It was very much seen as one that we would like to support, but we'd also like to support you know, other areas in Ramsgate as well, and we do support the town centre quite a lot. And therefore, because the business is involved and the businesses will benefit from this more than, than you know, Ramsgate as a whole so much, it was seen as something that we'd like to contribute towards it to get better year in or year. But it wasn't something that we could afford any more monies towards. So that was the thinking behind it.
Why won't the whole town benefit?
I'm not saying the whole town, they come down to it, but there's an awful lot of things that happen in the town centre that people don't necessarily know, whereas the things that we've targeted tend to be either in a range of venues, so for example, the Festival of Sound has got venues all over Ramsgate, or other areas have like asked for different things in different places, so we are definitely supporting this and definitely contributing towards it. But our focus was, when we looked at the applications that came in, you know, our focus was pushed elsewhere for various reasons. Because there are other pots of money for that particular event, as, as board councillors are already contributing. So, with that, I'm going to propose we accept the recommendation. Seconded by Councilor Heatherington. All those in favour? Captain County, sorry, pop your hands up so I can see. One, two, three, four, five, six. All those against? One, two, three, four, abstains. Councilor, I've taken you out of the equation because I realised that something was, so let's carry it.
Applicant Looping the Loop, CIC, event Totally Social Workshops. Grant requested £3,473. And recommendation that the council awards a contribution of £1,500 towards higher of the venue, possibly Bradford House, workshop materials and printing.
Any questions, comments?
Yes.
Not on the event.
Could you?
Yeah, certainly.
The applicant states, all our current work is focused around getting people to interact with line performance theatre and artists. To help to find a sense of joy and wonder in the world. Our project develops on three days of hugely successful workshops in 2023, which we ran thanks to support from RTC at Bradford House for families and individuals. We are developing activities for holiday periods when any age of person can take part and find something new to enjoy. We're also interested in how the activity might spread into the town centre. We will run the project over three days in August and then five days in October during the half-term break.
So we worked out that it was eight days in total, it's very family oriented and it was in different areas, so that's the reason behind it and also because it, Looping the Loop, Susie Humphries is involved, you know, she couldn't negotiate with herself towards Bradford House and that's for her to work out amongst her schedule and pay for her hire of her own, you know, rooms, it were. Any questions?
Yes.
I just wanted to check, it says in-kind support that the council could give, offer Bradford House as a venue. And then at the bottom it says towards a higher of the venue, possibly Bradford House, so that wouldn't be in-kind then, would it? It would be. Just checking.
Yeah, good point, that's the wording really, isn't it? I mean, the long and short of it is, again, because we could give very little monies towards this, if we could, if we could, you know, like, effectively waive the fee which is paying us, if you know what I mean, if we're going to support, it would just be giving her that, so that's, that's really what it is. But you're, you're right, the wording, I think, is misleading. So if she wanted to use Bradford House, then it would be easier for us to spend the money.
So we're voting on after they're a free venue? Are we?
Yes, so the.
I need to remind myself, sorry.
So the panel is recommending £1,500. Actually, the venue hire on Bradford House's current fees is, would come to £1,800. The only thing is that I envisage August Bradford House.
Yes.
Could still be available, but five days in October, I don't think it will be.
That's, yes, thank you, and that's what it was, it was the October side of things that we wouldn't be able to use Bradford House for. So, no, it was. So no, it was uh managed towards a venue, but ideally that would be Radford House, it would come back to us in, in the August period. But if not, it would be somewhere else. Does that make sense?
Hmm.
Yeah. Okay, I propose to accept the recommendation. Council Heatherington, all those in favour? Thank you.
Uh EF sixteen Royal Temple Yacht Club, the Ramsgate Week twenty twenty four grant requested five thousand pounds. And uh recommend that the council awards the applicant assistance with promoting the event, but no monetary award. Sorry, what happened to the. Oh, sorry, I.
No, that was Looping the Loop, wasn't it? Looping the Loop CIC?
Yeah.
Sorry, I, I thought you said Royal Temple Yacht Club and I'm.
Yes, the community.
Missed one, yeah.
Oh, we missed one, go on, be sure we missed, because I'm just looking at this.
Well, Looping, Loop CIC, that's what you'd. Community Creative CIC, acquisition of lease and rental costs.
Oh, that one, yeah.
Uh not in Ramsgate, not eligible.
Oh, well, that's, um that's the community fund, that's coming up.
Yes, all right, okay, sorry.
That is, that is the next one, sorry, yeah, it's the events fund. So we're, we're, sorry, so we're on the Royal Temple Yacht Club.
Uh so the, the recommendation is not to award any money, but to give assistance with promotion.
So let me explain, this came in like the other day, so, so the deputy town clerk phoned me up at work. And so this arrived really late when all the rest of the monies had been allocated. Um so it, it was seen as like, right, well, what can we do to support them in, in this? Because the monies had been.
I'll be up to our eighteen point five.
I haven't got the details there. I mean, possibly over if we're um at the carnival, but um.
Um, uh Deputy Town Clerk notes, the bal, balance of events fund budget for this quarter is four thousand. If council agrees with the grant scrutiny panel recommendations. Not sure whether there's a thousand pound additional.
Yeah.
But, but then there was also five hundred less given at one point. So I think if we, if we say that there's, there's three thousand remaining and.
Yeah, so it's a three thousand remaining. But if I could go through this particular, which I, have I got my phone in? If I could go through the um information that I was given, so and don't forget, that was just purely a recommendation, like, because it was late, so um. Yeah, I don't think, and, and again, I, where it says, Council Nicky says, um but no monetary award. I think what you meant to write there too, there's no monetary award decided until we, to be honest with you, because I didn't say, we're not going to give anything. So that's incorrect. I said, let's discuss that as council, because there wasn't. Yes, exactly, because we hadn't, and I needed to know again, Council Green, you know, how much money we had left in the pot and I didn't know at the time. So that's slightly misleading. Council, um Crichton.
I'm just concerned that the reason is to up grass committee in the first place, so that we wouldn't have last minute things, we would throw a bunch of lights and all of that. And it was meant to stop this happening. And so I'm not happy that they are considering it because it didn't make the grant meeting.
Good point.
I appreciate, I appreciate.